Thank you all for being here. Welcome to our town hall meeting regarding a facility update for the upcoming 2018-19 school year. So, I am Questa Bolo. Hopefully, I've met you. We also have ready to answer questions and contribute some folks who've been involved in these conversations for the last many, many months, and more intensely over the last two months. So, we have Mira Nagy, who is our Director of Finance and Advancement. We have our two staff liaisons to our Board of Directors, Kristin Shadowlight and Heather Smith.
Hi.
And then Jen Stickle, our Board President. And then we also have Meredith Johnson, who sits on our FHM Building Corporation that owns the building technically. And I'll let you guys talk here in a minute, too. So, tonight, we're going to do some historical context, where we've been, the timeline of pertinent communications and action to date regarding specifically the Pleasant View relocation efforts, and then share news for tonight, which is that facility update, as well as proposed strategic and operational adjustments in order to make that happen, and the timeline of next steps, because we would have a need for a transition of facility as well as a transition with our JFCO contract, which then impacts a contract with the State Board of Education. So, as always, we start with our Free Horizon Montessori mission. Through the Montessori philosophy, we inspire every child to learn and grow in a collaborative, peaceful, and safe environment. And our vision, we seek to transform our community by developing students who pursue their full potential, understand their global responsibilities, and respect others' self and the environment. And we are Montessori for the 21st century, a place to learn, a place to belong. All right. So, now, do you guys want to introduce yourself and a little bit about your context with the work that we've been working toward? The work that we've been working toward, that's awesome.
There's still no sound on the video.
I don't know that we can... Is it recording sound, though?
This is recording sound, yes.
It's acting like it's recording sound, but for some reason, it's just not broadcasting here.
Trying to think why I got involved with this. We were looking into some different opportunities that we presented. I'm Mira Nagy. We were looking into different opportunities as we were going forward into the next school year, as we're expanding, because as a school, we are growing. And what are some of our options, and looking at growth, et cetera, and the opportunity to present itself. When I inherited the opportunity with the property at Pleasant View, the prior person's position, that had done quite a bit of work, she left it and said, "Kind of monitor and keep going on and see what happens." And so, it just so happens that recently, as you'll find out, some things started taking place, and that's how I came to work with it.
I'm the current President of the Board of Directors. Do we have a question?
Well, I have a question. Can we do a conference call for the people at home, so they can at least?
I think we could do that. But we're supposed to probably...
It depends on where you're going to broadcast.
I know, so.
All right, yeah. I'm Jen Stickle, I'm the current President of the Board of Directors. I took over this August from Chris Weber. He's been the President for the last couple of years. It's my second and a half year under Board of Directors, just kind of monitoring and overseeing strategic operations. Where are we going long-term? What is our three-year plan or five-year plan? How do we get there? How do we help and support the school? That's kind of where I got into this, is looking at this from a long-term school potential. Is this going to be right up for Free Horizon long-term? That's kind of my role in proceedings.
Hey, Garrett. Hello, Meredith Johnson. I've been involved with the Building Corp. for about three years, coming up in May, and have historically been involved just in the maintenance of the building and making sure that this facility has been sufficient, adding the solar panels and all the exciting things we've done at this building. The excitement that Questa's going to share about a potential new building has stepped up my game a bit, and it's really been a very exciting opportunity to look to make sure that that facility is in the best interest of the school and the schools. And the screaming, something.
Sorry.
Is that noise?
Getting the sound to work again. Sounds... That's the sound of working.
Yeah, I'm getting like a "Ah!"
So, are we all ready?
Yeah, looks like we're all ready, yeah.
Okay. But there's a delay.
There's a delay.
That's why Luke used to wear headbands.
So, I wanted to move the camera back on you guys, now that the sound's working.
It doesn't matter. They're still tested, they want to see.
So, just a reminder, I'm currently the art studio teacher, but just a little bit of background that I bring to this particular committee. So, prior to coming to FHM, I was part of an international baccalaureate elementary school, which there's only a few here in Colorado, so I'm a little different philosopher, but innovative, just the same. Then, when I came to FHM, I taught in upper L2 for a few years, so I have background in teaching the general classroom, as well as my current position as the art teacher here. In addition to being a staff liaison, I'm excited to say that I'm also a part of the Little School Transition Committee, which ties into this position a great deal, and I'm also a part of the Communications... Oh, branding! And Branding Committee, so, which all contribute. So, I'm just excited to help us move forward.
I'm Kristin Shadowlight, and I'm the second staff liaison to the Board, and I have been part of this community for very long time. First and foremost, as a parent, like you to you, both of my children, who are now in high school, started in the primary, moved their way all the way through upper elementary on in. And then, I decided that my second career, I decided that I really, really loved this. Being a spilling mom wasn't just quite natural. I got into teaching and have been teaching in my position as lead primarily teacher for eight to nine years now, I've been here on staff. So, I was on staff last year, as I was on the... I'm sorry, as a staff liaison again last year. So, this year, knowing that there was all kinds of interesting things happening, but I've always been interested in knowing and having my pulse on what's going on with the school. So, being part of the Board of Directors as a staff liaison has always been a big plus coming. So, I'm a huge girl.
So, unfortunately, the matter of that, what we're... Do you want me to refocus it on those speakers? Do you think?
Okay. Turn one mic off, turn the other one on. Hopefully, that'll help. So, my background here at Free Horizon, I started here 10 years ago as the Director of Enrollment Communication, then was the Assistant Principal for nine whole months before being appointed Principal in Rome at first, and then permanent later on. And my own daughter also attended Free Horizon. My younger daughter did for her upper elementary years. She's getting ready to graduate from high school, so that's pretty exciting. So, we have a few norms tonight. So, we are providing webcasts and reporting, and we're asking that those be the official mechanisms. We are working with some pretty timely and sensitive information, and we are in the midst of a really big negotiation with the district. And so, we've coordinated the information that they are sharing and we are sharing. There is a letter that's going out to the Pleasant View community at 7:00 PM tonight, and I asked for that to be delayed until we have the opportunity to meet as a community together first. We are asking that you keep track of questions on index cards. As we go through some of the information, you will have the same reaction that I once did, which is, "What? Whoa, huh?" And so, I get that, and "How's that going to work? What about that?" A lot of that has been figured out, and a lot of it has not. And so, some of the questions you might have will be addressed later in the presentation, so if you could hang on to those on your index cards, you don't forget them. And then, we'll have a Q&amp;A session at the end. And then, we will also be capturing additional questions later on through an online form as well, so that if you think about things, if you're like me, you'll percolate on it, and then, you know, two weeks later, you'll be like, "Hmm, what about this? What about that?" And then, so that everyone can hear and engage, please silence phones and escort any upset children into the hallway. Hopefully, that won't be a problem. So, this is a slide that we've shown a few times, but this is where we've been. So, in 2006, the school opened in 2002 in a strip mall near 20th and Young Field. In 2006, we relocated to this facility and substantially reconfigured the interior spaces from a call center into a school. And then, in 2010, we purchased this campus for $6.5 million, and we built a new upper elementary wing and playground, the primary playground, and added the athletic field, all in the same summer. And then, in 2014, we secured a BEST grant to replace the HVAC systems, our roof, and our tenant's fence and parking lot surfacing, and some drainage issues, some of which worked really well and some dumb. And then, in 2015, we installed a solar array through a power purchase agreement. And in 2016, the district went for bond, they were going before the voters for a bond, and so, we updated our facility's master plan, and we raised $15,000 at spring pleading toward a new elementary playground design. And in the summer and fall, we did a play yard RFP, and then, we were looking at refinancing our current bond and leveraging that with funds that would have been gained through the district's bond initiative in order to trigger our desired expansion. But in November of 2016, you might remember, there was a little election that happened, and the 3B bond failed. And the bond market went from the most favorable in 25 years to the least favorable in the history of public bonds. So, the funding source dried up. But not to fear, in 2017, in January, we took a deep breath, decided to regroup, and we started the evaluation of a more phased approach to our facility expansions here at 581 Conference Place. And while looking at options for additional space for this current school year, conversations began with JFCO. So, the elephant in the room is how did the topic of relocating to Pleasant View Elementary even come up in the first place? We're going to blaze through a few slides that oversimplify these conversations, but they do capture the essence between Free Horizon and JFCO. And we've just created two characters, Free Horizon and JFCO. Really, there are several of us at Free Horizon and several people at JFCO, but this is the essence of the conversations that occurred. Hey, on February 10th, Free Horizon calls JFCO and says, "We need more space. Do you have any temporary buildings available?" On February 24th, JFCO says, "Well, we'll soon have a school building available. Are you interested?" On March 7th, we said, "Interesting idea. Can we check out the building?" JFCO, "Sure, if you decide you're interested, send a letter of interest to the superintendent." So, on March 7th, 2017, so yes, more than a year ago, our Director of Finance and Advancement, myself, our Board President, and our Facilities Manager toured the facility to see if it would work for Free Horizon. So, on March 24th, we... Between March 7th and March 24th, we did a lot of research, and so, then we said, "Hey, we've done a lot of research and think relocating to the facility could be great for Free Horizon, the Pleasant View community, and JFCO. Here's our letter of interest." That's actually a copy of our letter of interest. "We know the JFCO Board of Education can allow the facility to be offered to a state agency, political subdivision, municipality, or quasi-governmental corporation," which is us, "prior to offer to the general public. Please consider us first." On March 29th, JFCO says, "Thanks. We'll be in touch about next steps." On April 19th, "Hey, any news on those next steps or anticipated timeline?" On April 28th, we provided a letter to our communities about the status of the process and invited everybody to a community meeting. We held that community meeting on May 15th of 2017, and basically, we left for summer break, telling our families to check their emails often, because we might be moving over the summer. Because at that point in time, we were expecting the building to go up for sale on June 1st. So, in May, June, and July, there was a whole slew of emails and lots of phone calls and lots of communications, and there were lots of reasons why, "It got delayed, and nope, it's not going up now, it's going to go up at this time, it's going to go up at this time," and it never went up. And so, then in August and December, or September, any news? Chirp, chirp, chirp. Apparently, there wasn't. So, in October, "Hi again. We're still interested in that great facility and prepared to make a market value offer." JFCO, "We remember. We're meeting with Pleasant View community members next week to see what they hope happens with the facility." That was October 10th. November 9th, "Hey, how did that meeting with the Pleasant View community go? We are hoping to move forward quickly so that we can plan for the 18-19 school year. Here we are again, planning ahead for our growth." JFCO, "Well, we decided we want more feedback from the community, so we're hosting a meeting on December 5th. We have many parties interested in purchasing the site. We will share use ideas, but not specify parties who are behind those uses at the meeting." So, hold on tight, we want feedback from the community. So, okay, that's reasonable. So, on December 5th, JFCO held a community forum at the Pleasant View Elementary building to share six potential uses for the site and gather feedback from the community about each of those uses. And many of our administrators, board members, staff, and parents did attend that meeting, and the broadest support was for the facility to remain a school. So, that was in December. So, three days after that, I... Well, no, Free Horizon sent an email saying, "Hey, as we prepare for the first round of choice enrollment, starting in January, we thought we would check in to see if there's still a potential path forward for Free Horizon at that site." Because, like they said, there were several interested parties. JFCO said, "There's definitely still a potential path forward. Decisions will not be made in time for choice enrollment, though, so maybe you should reach out to the Pleasant View community. Remember, JFCO cannot provide FHM with any preferential treatment." So, on January 11th, we let the district know that we were taking their advice, and we were scheduling a meeting in the Pleasant View community for January 24th, so that they could have an opportunity to learn about our pursuit of the facility, as well as participate in that first round of choice enrollment if they were interested. And we provided the invitation, and JFCO says, "Thanks for keeping us informed." And then, on January 29th, we got the voicemail. JFCO says, "Hey, what would you think about becoming a JFCO option school?" And this is a direct quote from that voicemail. I still have it. "JFCO would like a Montessori program, and you already have a successful one. Let's talk." And it was like, "What? Wow, of all the possible scenarios, that was not one that we considered." And then, many internal conversations commenced at that time. And that photo really is what my face looked like when I heard that voice message, and then I took it in to Mira, and I played it to Mira, and that is really what Mira's face looked like when I played her that message. And then, we went to the Board, and we played them the message, and everybody around the table was like, "What?" As many of you are probably doing now. So, on February 7th, we met to talk, and JFCO says, "Hey, we would like Free Horizon to become a JFCO option school. We believe this could be good for Free Horizon, the Pleasant View community, and for JFCO." And we said, "Well, we were really surprised to hear that idea, but while we're open to discussions, we actually came today with a letter of intent to purchase the facility." And we pulled it out, and there were audible gasps in the room. And by the way, please respond by February 21st, because we need to set this timeline now. So, JFCO says, "Wow, we were not expecting this. It's clear you've done your research, and there's a high degree of merit. Please share with your Board that we are highly interested." So, the month of February entailed a lot of research, a lot of questions, a lot of meetings, a lot of talking, to try and figure out what being an option school would entail. And ultimately, our Board rejected the idea of becoming a JFCO option school, because it was too restrictive and risky. At the end of the day, an option school is under 100% the purview of the district for all of the hiring and the staffing allocations and funding and everything. And so, we said, "No, the Board's not interested in going down that path. What about this letter of intent that we presented you?" So, JFCO then counters with, "What about an innovation option school?" And an innovation school gets to maintain waivers, a high degree of autonomy, and you get a free facility. Is that enough to engage in conversation? Said, "Yeah, we'll take that back to our Board. They might be interested in a free facility." Along with waivers, as we've operated to date, and a high degree of autonomy. So, there was a lot more research, more questions, more meetings, more discussions, and it involved not only our Board of Directors, which included our staff liaisons in every one of those discussions, but also our executive leadership team, the Building Corporation, and the Facilities Committee. So, there were lots of folks involved in these discussions, and the Board and the Building Corp. and the Facilities Committee are made up predominantly of parents in our community. So, on March 8th, our Board took a vote. We had a... Well, first, we had a special executive session, where we went through a lot of detail of what JFCO had proposed and under the innovation option model. Tim Matlick from the district, he is the Achievement Director for Charter Schools, attended that meeting and was invited into the executive session to answer a lot of very direct questions and provide additional context and information. And then, once the Board exited out of executive session, they voted unanimously to move forward in pursuit of an innovation option model. Ultimately, the charter contract is between the district and our Board of Directors, and so that's why they would have to approve any changes to that model. So, innovation option school is a brand-new idea for JFCO. JFCO currently does not have any innovation schools. And so, there are multiple components that must come together to make this work. It requires a great deal of trust between both Free Horizon and JFCO in order for this to happen. And if the innovation does not work out, we're going to go back to the pursuit of the facility through the open bid process. So, in other words, there's not much to risk. Some other things. We are trailblazers in this work. As I said, we would be the first innovation school in JFCO. The district views us as a worthy partner in embarking down the innovation path, because there's a lot of give and take and a lot of negotiations that go into this. And so, it's actually a very high compliment that they would like to embark on this with So, how does an innovation option school function? So, option schools are under the purview of the district. Innovation schools are under the purview of the state. So, an innovation option school has to marry the two. And this shows... The bottom bar shows the degree of autonomy, and on the far left, it shows a district-run school doesn't have a whole lot of autonomy. The district mandates everything from their funding to their... The number of staff they can have and what types of positions and the curriculum they use. And on the far right is charter schools that have almost complete autonomy, with the exception that they have to remain fiscally viable, as well as demonstrate academic performance and advancement for their children. So, the light blue line, or the kind of electric blue line, shows the range of where innovation schools fall. It's anywhere along that continuum, and we're aiming for the far-right part of that, in terms of where we would want to land, maintaining the highest degree of autonomy and control, much like we do now. Option schools have a facility provided by the district. Access to additional district resources, they participate in student-based budgeting, and they have limited autonomy. However, they usually provide a unique curriculum that is different from the standard curriculum throughout the district. Innovation schools have waivers, and all of the waivers that we currently operate with from state law and district policy have already been granted a minimum of two and more than 60 times in some cases to other innovation schools in the state. So, we would not be asking for any waiver that is different than anybody else has ever asked. It wouldn't be the first time going before the Board of Education. An innovation school maintains a high degree of autonomy, so we would be keeping either a Board of Directors or steering committee, and our Board and steering committee would maintain the hiring and supervision of the principal responsibilities. The principal would continue to control all of the other hiring, as things are, and I have made very clear in all of these negotiations, we are a package deal. If this goes through, we're picking up everybody here, our staff, our students, our families, we're moving everybody over. Nobody's staying here. So, they don't get to say, "You don't get to have that position or this position," and that sort of a thing. And then, we would maintain control over our curriculum instruction and all that goes with it, and we would maintain a high degree of financial autonomy, ranging from a model very similar to our current one or closer to SVB. This is the biggest area of negotiation, because the district would really like us to be closer to what the other district schools are doing, and we would really like to be closer to what we're currently doing. So, how do we maintain our Free Horizon Montessori identity? So, first and foremost, we continue taking a mission-based approach with students first and central in all of our decision-making, first and foremost. If we didn't feel like this was in the best interest of students, we wouldn't be going down this path. We will continue to follow the American Montessori Society accreditation standards and have that written into our contract with the district. Specifically, the district shall not ask or require anything of Free Horizon Montessori that is in conflict with the American Montessori Society accreditation standards. That gives us our mixed-stage classrooms, it gives us our Montessori-trained teachers, it gives us educational assistance, it gives us a three-hour work cycle, it gives us materials, covers a lot. And again, we're a package deal. Our entire staff, student body, and all of our programs come with us and remain under our school. Nothing transfers to the control of the district, including our preschool, before and after care, clubs, camps. Again, continue to remain part of Free Horizon and under our control. That is different from how it operates in the wider district. Those things are usually handled by the district. So, in short, we would continue to be Montessori for the 21st century, a place to learn, a place to belong. So, there would be some changes, though. First and foremost, we would not have a facility payment, which we currently pay about $468,000 a year to be in this facility. So, it opens substantial resources to support student learning, materials, professional development, as well as staff compensation and other priorities that we just haven't been able to get to with our limited finances. We would add another enrollment priority category, so that students living in the Pleasant View neighborhood would have a percentage of open spaces each year available to them. Our current students and siblings and staff students would always still have the priority that they do. We would then create another category after that for the percentage of remaining spaces available. We would lose the right to appeal should the district decide to no longer keep us as an innovation option school. So, under a charter, if the district says, "Sorry, Free Horizon, you don't get to exist anymore," and decides to negate our contract, we have the right to appeal to the State Board of Education. And if we can show that we were not in any... We weren't doing anything illegal, we weren't failing financially, and our students are still making progress, the district can't just pull our charter. So, we would lose the right to appeal. However, we would include a safety clause in the contract. And I asked specifically about this, and they said, "Yes." So, it would be anywhere from 12 to 24 months to reapply for our charter under the renewal process, because we would not be considered a new charter school. And we would have the first right of refusal to purchase the Pleasant View facility. Sounds like a pretty good safety clause. Of course, we would change our locations. This is just a map that shows where we currently are, down here at the bottom, and the new location up at the top. So, depending on the route you take, it could take you anywhere from six to seven minutes drive from here. We would also have different spaces. So, this chart illustrates the differences between where we are currently in the center column, that's 581 Conference Place, our current location, and on the right, the Pleasant View facility. So, the square footage would grow substantially. We currently have 34,700 with two tent classrooms, and over there, it would be 51,300 square feet. So, we increase our acreage by about 50%. We have an older building over there. There are 20 standard classrooms, as well as the additional formal true gymnasium, cafeteria, a commercial-grade kitchen, a very large and amazing library, a music classroom that has soundproofing on it. The art classroom is much larger, a computer lab that is larger, a performance stage, and dedicated before and after care rooms. So, they would have their own spaces. So, what would the next steps be? Step number one would be demonstrated support from our community. We need to show that there is support for this idea moving forward from our Board, our teachers and staff, and School Accountability Committee, as well as parents and guardians and students. And so, there will be links to surveys coming out, and here's the kicker, though, we have to do this very quickly. So, we're going to be sending these out in the next week or so, because we go before the JFCO Board of Education on April 5th. And I'll tell you why that timeline matters in a minute. So, once we have the demonstrated support from our community, our key FHM personnel meet with JFCO personnel in order to work through the specific details of personnel, finances, division of operation responsibilities, safety clauses, and all of the details that are going to go into that contract with them. We are also simultaneously creating an innovation plan, and our FHM Board has to vote to approve that innovation plan, because it would essentially mean that if it's approved, we're going down a different type of school organizational path. And then, we appear before the Board of Education on April 5th to provide an overview of that innovation option model, as well as the innovation plan application. The Board of Education, they, like our Board, they have to hear items of material consequence first, and then, they don't vote on it until the second time that they see the information. So, then approximately two weeks later, they would actually vote to either accept or deny that with the JFCO Board of Education. So, that's about mid-April. Then, if they approve it, it gets submitted to the Colorado Department of Education by mid-April, and the reason is that we need to get on the State Board of Education June meeting in order for this to all be approved in time for the 2018-19 school year, because our fiscal year begins on July 1st. And the State Board of Education, anytime you submit something for them to read and vote on, they have six... vote on, they have 60 days to act. So mid-April, in order to get on their June meeting calendar, is when we have to get that information to the State Board to vote. Then we also are in negotiations for finalization of our new operating contract, and then it would go into effect July 1st. It's vitally important, as it will be our new governing document in place of our charter agreement. If it is not approved by CDE, JFCO intends to appeal and reapply. And then the next step, well, this is actually how, some of these are actually happening simultaneously, facility preparation. We have to prepare both this building to vacate, as well as prepare the new building to move in. JFCO would be, again, completing infrastructure repair and maintenance items throughout the spring and the early summer in anticipation of our relocation. And then finally, the big move. So summer camp would still be held at this location, and then we would be hiring a corporate moving company, and our anticipated actual move date is around the 1st of August, so after the conclusion of summer camp. We will have opportunities for families to visit prior to school starting, and then school would, it begins on Monday, August 20th, and it would begin in the new location, if all of this goes through. So we have to show that we have community support, we have to show that we have board and accountability and staff support, and then we have to have the options plan and the innovation plan approved by both JFCO and the innovation plan approved by the state in order to make all of that happen. Communications plan. So tonight, we're having this meeting. JFCO letter goes out to the Pleasant View community in about 17 minutes. And then before spring break, you would have a communication from Jill with tonight's information and a link to the recording of the community town hall meeting. If we can get that done tomorrow, we will, but the video actually has to process in order to be posted, and that takes hours of time. So as soon as it's done, it'll be out. And then ongoing, oh, and then before spring break, we'd also have a survey mucky open so that we can gather questions from community members as they arise. As well as ongoing, Jill will continue to work with the JFCO communications department to assure that our families receive current, correct, and timely information as the process unfolds. And she will also be reaching out to Pleasant View community members to continue building relationships and foster goodwill with our new neighbors, so that we can hopefully integrate in a very positive way as we move.